Ms.
Ms. Charicella?
Here.
Ms. Cora is absent. Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward?
Here.
Ms. McThebola?
Here.
Dr. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Scorpelli is absent. Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Rundell?
Here. Mr. Corey, will you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting. In accordance with P L. nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News on January third, twenty twenty-three. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office in the administration building on the same date. Copies of the procedures in effect for regular board meetings are available for the public at tonight's meeting. Ms. Stevenson, would you read the mission statement?
The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education in partnership with a supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everyone had a lovely spring break. Just a couple of things. As we know, the demolition for Nabisco has been delayed, so a letter was sent out today by Mr. Van Ness informing everybody that we will have school next Monday, which was in the original letter as well. The Board of Education has two emergency closing days. We are holding those days right now until we see what happens with the Nabisco implosion. Should that continue to get delayed, maybe at the next meeting, we can start to discuss give back days for that. But for now, we're going to keep those in our proverbial back pocket. Tonight, we have a recognition, but track team is still running, so they will be here shortly. But we do have our school climate committee of stakeholders to discuss the district findings. And on that committee, it was chaired by Ms. Michelle Girolando and Ms. Megan Finley. In addition, we had Dr. Robinson representing the Board of Ed, Ms. Slattery representing the teachers, and Maya Schwartz representing the students. I was not involved, nor was anybody else outside of Ms. Girolando and Ms. Slattery in terms of district employees involved in this process. We didn't want to put our thumbs on the scale, so to speak, but I can tell you through seeing them over the last several months, they put a lot of effort into this presentation, and they went above and beyond what I expected. They ran focus groups. They had a lot of conversations, and I'm very excited for their presentation tonight. And on behalf of the Board of Education and the community, before you even present, we thank you for your efforts. I know that that was a heavy lift, and so I'm going to turn it over to you. So you're on. So maybe while they're getting set up, just really quickly for people who may not know, and I'm sure they're going to talk about this, you could just yell out for me to be quiet. But we did do a survey back in October through Rutgers in partnership with Rutgers and Department of Education for a climate survey. It was a board goal this year, and so the board will be accomplishing that goal tonight in terms of the presentation part, which will wrap everything up, and then next steps going forward would hopefully set up future goals and things. So I'm going to stop. It's all yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's with a lot of excitement that I share these survey results here. I just want to introduce myself again. I'm Damali Robinson. I'm the current sitting vice president for the Board of Education, and I look forward to presenting to you guys today. So what is school climate, anyway? I think when we discuss these results, we want to make sure that we're all thinking about the same thing and that what we're really discussing is the school climate, not really just the school culture. Whereas the culture reflects many more of the ingrained values and some of the things that make Glen Rock Glen Rock. The New Jersey Department of Education, in cooperation with Rutgers University, decided that school climate and discussing the things that encompass school climate were much more of an objective way for us to evaluate what our kids are facing and what our school community is facing at large. The school climate encompasses the dynamic and diverse feelings, perceptions, experiences of school community members. We have safety, relationships, academic environment, and organizational structure involved here. How was our climate survey conducted? So as part of our desire to have our finger on the pulse of the community and the district, part of our board goals were to analyze the school climate and to make sure that there was an inclusive climate, one that the students and the staff and the parents at large felt were safe, et cetera. And the New Jersey Department of Education, in cooperation with Rutgers University, created a validated study that they were able to put out on several levels to school districts in the state of New Jersey. And so we're part of the early adopters in this, and so that kind of makes it exciting to see that as time passes and more school systems and school districts get involved, that the data can become more robust in theory. And so this was based on their expert understanding. It was also provided at no cost to us. So I just find that this was just perfect timing. I'm sorry, because my glasses, I don't have them. I just want to make sure that I'm covering everything. So it's designed to capture a snapshot of the school climate across the district. And the snapshot is important because even as we're looking at some of the data and some of the questions that were asked, things that were even valid questions at the time that the students sat down and took them, there were things that have been put in place since then. So we just have to recognize that this is literally a snapshot in time, and we can perhaps take this survey over again in the future and get another snapshot that we're able to trend essentially. And this was performed in the fall of twenty twenty-two, just like Dr. Charleston just mentioned, and it was in an online survey format. So where we are in the process today. In January, we had a survey committee that was formed by myself as well as the esteemed ladies behind me. And we sat together and analyzed and just took a look at the study itself. And then within that, we were able to try and break down some of the areas that you'll learn about as we progress through today's presentation and just see which ones were the ones that were most important to our school district. And we went through our analysis, and then we took it a step further. The initial goal with our study was to collect data. And on the way to that is also getting stakeholder input. During the week of March ninth, we were able to sit with parents, with students, and with staff and do focus groups so that we could get you some additional data that's represented in our analysis today. And then you have our presentation today, and then at the end of this presentation, you'll hear from us about some ideas for where this could go next and that this is really just an opening statement, essentially. This is just an initial look for us to take a look at and see what direction the board and the district thinks that we should go in next. Ms. Girolando?
All right, so I'm going to talk a little bit about who responded to the survey. You can see up on the slide that all of the students at the schools did have an opportunity during the school day to respond to the survey. In terms of the elementary level, it's a little bit small there, but it's grades three through five that the students were able to respond, and middle school and high school were grouped together. So that data is for students in grades six through twelve. We had staff members had the opportunity to also respond, and then parents and guardians in the community were sent that survey by the building principals as well. So you can see a breakdown of those numbers. The elementary school numbers, in terms of the students, are very high. They were completing it during class, so we had them there, and they got that done. And then you can see the numbers for the middle school, high school are also high, about nine hundred eighty-six out of about thirteen hundred. So the percentages for the students are higher than you can see they are than for the staff and for the parents and guardians. We did decide to group the elementary school data together because of some of the smaller sample sizes and the staff numbers and a little bit on the parent guardian side. But what we did find when we met initially to look at the data, we collected the feedback from the building principals, and we found with the elementary data that not only did all of our different lenses land in the same categories, but the principals had as well. So it was actually a great exercise in that we saw the same patterns and we saw the same areas that the district was excelling in and that there would be room for some work as well. So in terms of, you know, staff, we had about a fifty percent rate for the elementary schools and lower for the middle school, high school. And then we did the best we could in terms of determining how many elementary families and middle school, high school families or homes there would be. And we came up with about nine hundred for our elementary and nine hundred and fifty. So you can see that estimate on the percentages there. In this slide, you can see the topics that were covered in the survey. There are a total of thirteen topics. The first eight, you can see that those were relevant to all stakeholders. So students, staff, parents, and guardians were asked some iteration of the same question for those topics there: physical safety, student voice and involvement, the student-staff relationships, expectations of behavior. There's pro-social and then negative student interpersonal behaviors. So those are the inverse of one another. The way the questions were asked determined what the score was. And then the supports for student social, emotional learning and academic culture. Those were relevant to everyone, and so those questions were asked of everyone. And then the final five, you can see student sense of belonging, that was specific to students. Family support engagement was asked of staff and parents. And then the last three were specific just to the staff members, and so they were the only ones who answered those questions. So we found from the Rutgers platform that a mean score of two point five was considered a target score. And so Rutgers indicated that anything at a two point five or higher would indicate that the majority of those who were responding agreed that that was a positive element of school climate. The scale was one through four. We found that most of the Glen Rock scores were strong, so they were at two point five or above. So what we did is we looked at the lowest scoring items rather than anything that was simply under two point five because we thought that would give us a better understanding of the areas where we might be doing okay, but there's certainly room for some improvement. And that's where we focused our efforts. You can see in this example, this is from the middle school, high school students. You can tell that by the number of respondents. And so this is just a sample of what we were looking at for all of the different stakeholders across all of the different questions. And it was nice that we did that data dive each through a different lens. Mine is the administrator, a staff member, a student, a board member, and a parent guardian. So it was really nice to see all of that come together. In terms of the summary of our findings, which each of these lovely ladies behind me tonight will get into much more detail, again, we found that the results were strong and that the majority of those responses came back at over the two point five target average. That certainly speaks to the efforts of our staffs, our staff members, our families, the leaders in the district. We don't have students up there, but we certainly should because it's definitely a shout-out for them as well. Where we're doing well, according to the survey data, is that sense of physical safety. There have been a lot of upgrades and improvements in terms of making sure that our schools are secure and safe, and so that seemed to be reflected in the data. Student sense of belonging and collegial support were also areas where students, parents, and then teachers felt confident. And it was also nice to see that supportive staff and student relationships across the board ranked higher, rated highly. And so, you know, again, we feel like our students are making connections at school with one another and with staff members, and that's very important to us. The areas for focus, again, that we'll talk more about, from teachers at all levels, elementary, middle school, high school. There are some areas where we need to pay attention to organizational resources and supports and leadership support. For our students in grades three through five, our sixth through twelve teachers and all of our parents and guardians, there's some commentary about negative student interpersonal behaviors, so things that maybe aren't going so well that we can look to improve in the future. And then from our sixth to twelve students, they're looking for some improvements in the academic culture and classroom practices, and as I said, we'll go into more detail. We did look at the subgroup of parents of students who have I E Ps, students who receive services through the special services department. In general, we found that their opinions, the data collected from them, was consistent with the overall population. But there are a couple of differences that we will note tonight just so, again, we want to make sure that we uncover everything and we can move forward in a positive way. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Finley.
All right, so what we're going to do in this section is we're looking at the parents and guardians. We're looking at the staff, and we're looking at the students. And the person on the committee who was representing that set of stakeholders is going to share the data, so just to tell you what's coming. Starting with the parents, we've split it, as we said, into the grade three to five parents collectively across all elementary schools and the grade six to twelve parents in the middle and high school together. And while there's lots of things that were great, and we will come back to that because we think it's important for this section, we are just going down to the bottom of the chart. And as we said, generally around the sort of two point seven mark was where we did a cutoff to say if it's below that or if it's the lowest scores in the group, then we're going to call it out and say, this is someplace that even though Glen Rock is awesome, we could probably do a little better. On the grade three to five parents, there was those negative interpersonal student behaviors. For the grade six to twelve parents, those same items on negative interpersonal behaviors, and also social and emotional learning were call-outs. So to break that down just a little further, the next level of detail, what's really interesting is the actual statements behind that because the category is a little bit of jargon. But the statements that people actually answered are what's going to jump out at you and say, okay, now I get it. One interesting fact here is that middle school and high school parents were saying it is a big or medium problem that students are mean to each other, online or through text, they exclude each other, they say mean things to each other. The students in those grades actually did not score themselves that high, and Maya will show you that in a little bit. I'm giving you a little preview of her section. They had other things to say. And we had some really robust and interesting discussions about the why of that, which ranged everything from, you know, the parents and the staff or maybe a little more attuned to what, you know, things should look like, and the kids themselves may not quite be aware of what's happening because they're immersed in it, to, you know, the protectiveness that we feel. We think that even though the students might not be calling it out, that it is important for us to look at it, and if it means that we need to call out to the students a little bit what positive interpersonal behaviors look like because they may not even be realizing that something's wrong, that's actually helpful to know. Across the four elementary schools, you didn't see the online and through text jumping out because at those grades, we aren't seeing the online social media type behavior, but the saying mean things to each other in person was a lower scoring item. And then on supports for social, emotional learning, the statement, "In my child's school, adults help my child develop strategies to express different feelings." That was the main statement that was driving the lower score there. We'll talk later about sort of the things that might be happening or not happening at the schools to deal with this. That'll come at the end. Going down to that analysis that we did, just to look at that subgroup of parents that had students with I E Ps, this was a group that we were able to carve out through the types of analysis that Rutgers gave us. And what I did was just look at a comparison. Where those parents maybe were different in comparison to the general population. And so you see that there's actually a couple of items, staff-student relationships and social, emotional learning, where the parents of students with I E Ps actually had more positive scores than the rest of the population. And the special services team, the aides and their paraprofessionals and their efforts give credit to that for what's happening there and what students are experiencing. But at the elementary school level and the middle high school level, this pro-social interpersonal comes out as something that they scored a little bit lower. And when we dive into what that actually is, students in my child's school can resolve their problems with other students. They include students with disabilities in groups and activities, and my child has chances to help make rules in the classroom or school. So especially the exclusion point, I think is really important for us to take, that that's someplace where parents are feeling differently and where both our middle school, high school, and our elementary school teams, guidance counselors, special services team, and teachers could really take a look at that and see what might be able to happen there. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Slattery to take us through the staff responses.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lauren Slattery. I'm a sixth-grade math teacher, and I'm also the team leader for sixth-grade Rock. So as you could see from the staff responses, we have a lot of consistencies across the top of the domains: sense of physical safety, student sense of belonging, collegial support, and supportive student-staff relationships. Looking at the bottom, elementary school K through five, a score of two point four one was our lowest, organizational resources. And then for grades six through twelve, the cutoff we used was a two point six and below. And we have, again, organizational resources, so that was a consistent across the board. And then also, six through twelve, you can see leadership support. Also going back to what we saw with parents across the board, we have the negative interpersonal and social interpersonal behaviors. More six through twelve, not so much the K through five side. So that was interesting in our findings. So going a little bit deeper, we took the two lowest, so K through five, the organizational resources. We can see that scores for this dimension were lower for the elementary and higher for the middle school. Elementary average was a two point one two versus a two point four six. I am given professional learning opportunities or trainings that are relevant to my needs. Again, professional learning opportunities or training that I am provided are sustained over time, lower elementary versus middle school higher, and the high school was higher. I have adequate time for preparation and planning. Again, elementary school was on the lower side, two point one nine. Middle school, a little bit higher, two point five seven. And then I have adequate time for collaboration with other staff. Elementary average was a two point one nine. Middle school, high school was a two point five seven. And I think, you know, as we go through the presentation and hear about the focus groups, why that could have occurred, different K through five versus six through twelve. And then the other one that shows that we need some improvement with, leadership support. This dimension on the other side was worse for middle school, high school than elementary. But both areas, something that we felt the district and the staff and everyone could work together to improve. Areas that we drew upon were school-level leaders value staff involvement and decision-making. School-level leaders follow through on commitments. School-level leaders recognize staff members for doing well at their jobs. And school-level leaders work with staff to develop a shared vision that guides our work. And now I'm going to hand it over to Maya, who's going to talk about the students.
Hi, my name's Maya. I'm a senior, and I will be sharing the student responses with you. So once again, we focused on the lowest scoring domains for each group. So for grades three to five students, it was negative interpersonal behaviors at two point seven nine. And then for grades six through twelve, it was academic culture and classroom practices at two point six six. So in terms of negative student interpersonal behaviors for areas to focus on or more specific questions, students at this school leave other students out of groups or activities on purpose. Students at this school are mean to each other, online or through text. Students at this school say mean things to each other, and then students at this school push, hit, or kick each other on purpose. And as Ms. Finley touched on before, it was interesting to see that this category didn't score as low as it did for middle and high school students as it did for elementary school students. And then in terms of academic culture and classroom practices, the questions that scored the lowest were, my teachers explain how schoolwork will help me in the future. My teachers give me a chance to pick from different assignments. My teachers teach about topics I like. And then my teachers teach about people like me slash include different cultures in their lessons. So in terms of proposed focus areas, I just want to preface, these are not solutions that we're providing, but instead, proposed focus areas based off of information that we've gathered from analyzing the data, from our own conversations, feedback from building principals, as well as focus groups that we held for parents and guardians, teachers, and students. So in terms of negative student interpersonal behaviors, something that, you know, can be looked into is, how might schools and families work together on strategies to reinforce kindness, respect for others, and positive ways to connect? There have been recent investments made in counseling as well as an implementation of a ruler curriculum that might not have had an impact yet. So that's something to look into more. In terms of academic culture and classroom practices, can district leaders incorporate survey feedback in the next round of curriculum work slash program of studies updates for grades six through twelve? Here, we might have a potential opportunity to make more, you know, to make activities that are more relevant to real-life experiences and give students some more agency in directing their own learning for their future. In terms of organization, resources, and supports, how can district leaders partner with the G R E A to build time for prep and collaboration into the school day? And then leadership supports, can supervisors, school leadership, and staff work together to incorporate staff input more visibly and inclusively across tenures? And then we can also look into see our recent efforts to improve staff supports starting to have a positive impact because, again, this survey was taken in the fall, so there have been some steps across different areas to try to improve some of these areas. And then lastly, in terms of pro-social student behaviors, should special services team explore the concerns about inclusion raised by parents of students with I E Ps and team up with school guidance staff to address it?
Thank you. All right, we are going to bring it home and then open it up to questions for all you guys. We did want to because we just spent several pages and several of us all talking about the focus areas, and those are important. But in my work with organizations, thinking about strategy and what to do, it's always what you need to do differently, but also what you need to keep doing and make sure you don't lose sight of that as well. And so these things that are working now, you don't want to lose those. The sense of physical safety that comes in part from the community of Glen Rock and the fact that we look out for each other and we care about each other. the fact that we look out for each other and we care about each other and we're there for each other, that's happening in school and it's happening in the rest of the town. But also, the district has made significant recent investments on security systems, on the people and the security staff that are there and present in our schools, and processes and approaches, like all the middle schoolers wearing their lanyards and IDs. They might not like it, but it's really helpful to know who the students are and be able to see right away that they're somebody that doesn't belong. Those types of things that the school is making those incremental improvements all the time, and it's reflected in how people feel. On supportive staff and student relationships, we're lucky to have the small schools that we have, to be able to keep the teacher-student ratios low and class sizes low, and to be able to put supports in the classrooms so that the students really feel that there are people that are there for each other, and the teachers and paraprofessionals are going above and beyond every day to show they care about our students. In addition, there's been an investment in addition of guidance staff, particularly at the elementary schools, but also wellness counselors and a wellness room at the middle school and high school. Those are all things that the board has done to strengthen that area, and it's been a board goal to do that. In terms of sense of belonging, "I'm proud to be a student at this school. I can be myself at this school. People at this school like me for who I am." Those are statements that our students agree with, and that's really important. We make sure we keep that. We figure out what it is that's making people feel that way and keep it going. And then on collegial supports, where our staff are saying that they are showing up for each other, staff engage with each other in a professional and respectful manner at work, I get support from other staff when I need it, and staff trust and care for one another at this school. Again, feeling really good about the fact that the staff are feeling that way about each other and about the environment that they have to work in. You know, whenever you come to work and you're happy, it's usually because of the people and that's showing up in this survey. So I'm going to have DeMolly just finish us up to say, where are we going from here? One of the things we definitely heard from people was, oh wait, I was expecting that this presentation was going to have all the answers and all the things for the board to do. And that's not where we are. She took us through the process. Where we are is, here are the things to focus on. Here's the areas that the board might want to take and put in their goals. So here's what's next.
Thank you, Ms. Finley. So just like Ms. Finley stated, this is really just a starting point for us, and it's just really good for us to recognize that this is kind of like where we take this, where we are able to see what input that we have from the community, from our students, from our staff, and, you know, find a way to integrate it into some of our umbrella goals and integrate it into programs and initiatives. The climate survey committee is going to take input that they've received also from the focus groups that have already been performed, as well as any questions that may arise today from either the board or from community members via email or from public comments, and respond to them and then present that information, you know, further to the board and the district for evaluation. The building principals will continue to leverage the survey findings and use that to implement new initiatives where possible. Rutgers has also developed a set of recommendations based on each of the major areas of this climate survey. That information has been provided to the board as well for further evaluation, as well as for the district and future programming. And the districts will just continue to encourage district teams to work on specific issues. We know that this survey was not all-encompassing. Many of the questions that were arising out of this were, you know, they would, people wished that they had much more of an open-ended opportunity, or that they wished that some of the specific items, they didn't feel like really addressed the root of the problems that they were experiencing. And as much as we wanted a survey that would elicit that kind of information and allow people to feel heard specifically through a survey, again, the district's decision to go with a validated study that was widely disseminated throughout the state of New Jersey, that it was going to be harder for us to get that kind of open-ended, like blanket, like just tell us what you're feeling kind of study and be able to compare that to future data. So it's just for the public to know that if they want to learn more about this presentation today, they'll have access to the presentation. It's going to be, it's also recorded. And school-level data reports will be made available on the Board of Education website, and we look forward to hearing any of your questions and comments. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Maybe just comments. First off, thank you. That was a lot of work, a lot of analysis, and a lot of data to go through, and I'm sure it took you quite a bit of time to get there. I think there's a lot of useful information in here, and I think it'll help all of us as a board to move forward. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a few comments also. Just thank you again. I know this is a lot of work. I think it's great that you guys didn't just say, hey, we're at 2.5 and move on. You really looked at the lowest scoring, and I think that that was really thoughtful and important, extra, going the extra step also and engaging stakeholders. I think that that's pretty amazing. And thank you for taking a look separately at the IEPs, the kids with the IEPs, because that is a different population. So to be thoughtful, I thought is appreciated. I just think you really dug deeper because this is a lot of data and this is a lot of great work, and I do hope we do it again to see how things compare. Because I know a lot has been done since even this survey in the fall. So if we do it again next year, we'll be able to see progress. So thank you.
Yeah, I would absolutely, just on your last point about redeploying the survey, you know, if the board was to come from today to say, here are the things that on each of these focus areas are happening, you have to decide when is right. Is it next fall, or is it, let's give it a year or more to see those things kind of, now I feel really good that I can check in on them. You want to make sure you give it that time, but yeah, then do it again and see on these exact questions, did the needle move or not? And they'll have your answer.
I think over the years, we've done various kinds of surveys in the school system. I think this one has been the best. It takes care of everyone who's in our school system. It takes care of the teachers' issues, the parents' issues, the students' issues, and as well as the IEP issues as well. And I think in keeping with, if we're going to do a survey again, this is one that should be repeated, realizing that the teachers will be different, the students will be different, and so on. But that will be somewhat more interesting if we can produce goals to cover this and see two or three years from now if we've actually covered them with a whole new group of fifth-grade, third through fifth-grade students and high school students. And so, so I want to thank all of you for doing this survey, and it's a wonderful job. I like it a lot. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I also had a question. The numbers, the percentages of the folks who filled out the surveys, is there anything that we can look at across the state? Were our numbers like average, or hopefully people will see this and more people will engage next year because now that they see the data? I feel like there's a little room for growth in the parent and staff.
100%. We would have liked to see, I, you know, just fundamentally, you'd like to see higher participation rates than we got. Now, that doesn't mean that these aren't perfectly normal response rates. And so that's a question we'll have to take back to the Rutgers team to find out what they are seeing in the other school deployments. So we'll note that as a follow-up to go find out, like, maybe every school isn't getting any more than 20% of parents to take the, I saw this in my email, I meant to do it, I didn't get around to it, I don't have time for it. It was a really long survey. So the, definitely you did see on some of the questions, and you could actually see it, that there were questions that lots of people answered and questions that fewer people answered because you had drop-off. Now, they all showed up still, right? But you might have had a sample size of 200, and then you had a sample size of 150 because people just couldn't get through all 15 minutes or whatever of the survey. So I think, let us find out whether this is not as good as we want it to be, but actually still pretty good, or not great. And next time we do it, we need to figure out a way to get those participation rates up. Anyone else? Ms. Corbilly?
I just want to thank each one of you for the time that you put into this presentation, analyzing the data, and making sure we had feedback from all the different stakeholders. I think that was important, that we had the student looking at the student data and the parent looking at the parent data. I do hope that if we do a survey again, we do get more of the staff participation. I really wish that we had a higher percentage of the middle school, high school. I'm hoping this data reflects the full staff body and is representative of them, but this really was a voice for them, for us to hear from them. So I hope going forward, we do find a way to get the teachers and the staff to participate in these types of surveys for us to really know how they all feel and to move forward and set goals that can help reach, you know, improve on areas that need to be improved upon, and then just also continue in the areas where we are succeeding.
So, you know, for what it's worth, showing this presentation to that focus group of staff, which again is a small number, it was 10 or 12 staff, right? So it's still not a big sample size. But we, if we, if that group had said, this isn't representative of how we feel at all, then we would have been more concerned than we were. Yes, I'd love to see more participation, but we were able to validate at least a little bit by having some folks look at it and sort of say, yeah, like, these are the concerns. And there are concerns here. So it's not that, you know, because we only got 50% or 40% of the staff to participate, that we weren't seeing concerns and areas of improvement that are pretty resonant with things that we're hearing from other sources that we can triangulate to say, this is the right set of stuff. So. Anyone else? Ms. Corey?
Thanks for honing in. It looks like we're doing a great job across the board, so it gives the opportunity to really focus in and see like what, to slice, dice, dissect on the pieces of the puzzle where we want to be able to get that feedback. People are really interested to talk about the things that they can, they can see we can do better. I would be curious to know if we go back to the Rutgers panel, how the disparity between our higher-ranking categories and our lower-ranking categories compare as a, as a spread between other districts as well? Like, are we, are we a seven out of 10 district? And how does that compare? How does the variation compare between other districts in our, in our district peer group and vice versa? So look forward to seeing this again and look forward to seeing what you get back from them.
We were definitely going back to Rutgers a couple times to say, give us benchmarks, you know? We really want to know what this means. We're hoping after they do some deployments in the spring, that they'll feel like they have enough of a sample size of other schools to give us those comparisons. We can still ask a one-off question, and maybe they'll give us a ballpark-y type of answer, like, oh yeah, your participation rate was pretty good, oh yeah, your disparity was pretty similar to some others. But they're not going to give us data to compare it to until they feel like they have a big enough group of schools that it's valid statistically to give us those benchmarks. But we're all dying the same way you're asking. And I think what you're doing about asking about those data questions of what good looks like and what divergence looks like are exactly the right ones, once we're able to get it.
Keep it up.
Anyone else? For my team here, did I, is there anything that you want to add to the answers to the questions that I didn't, because I just sort of jumped in?
You were amazing.
You were all amazing. The sad thing is that we don't get to hang out together anymore because this is a dream team, and we had, we had some good times talking about the data and getting our hands dirty and all of this, so.
Well, I did also want to say thank you too. Also, when I first saw the data, I thought, this is so much information. And I was a little worried that we really wouldn't be able to give it the time or the effort that it really required. I was able to sit on, in on one of your meetings, and so I was able to see the amount of time and thought and investment that you guys put into it. It is impressive. I was very impressed with all of you, but I did want to just say that I was very impressed with our student, Maya. It was, no, it was wonderful to see how invested you were and how wonderfully, like wonderfully spoken, well-spoken you were. So I just want to say, like, we are very proud of you, and thank you very much for taking the time and effort to be part of this. And thank you all.
No, yeah.
Yeah, she really hated all the classes that she missed in order to join us. It was a bummer, but she did it anyway.
I think, I think Ms. Rondell used to entertain a motion to let Maya graduate early. Right? See? And I mean, all the extra work she did, I mean, clearly that's.
Dr. Charleston is currently on vacation right now.
Yes.
And I think he's.
I'm not, I'm not thinking clearly, apparently.
Can I, can I just, I want to respond to that, and made me think of one other thing too. Both, you know, Maya was amazing and she was with us for the entire journey, but the focus group of students that was collected, it was grades eight through 12, and a really sort of diverse group of folks who had different points of view. And you guys have the notes from that focus group, and I really encourage you, particularly on the curriculum and academic practices stuff, to take a look at what they had to say, because I think they shared some stuff that was really constructive and thoughtful and that we could take on board. And then I did want to call out, we said it, but I really wanted to call it out, that the building principals, again, are looking at this data themselves, each one of them. And we asked them to give us their insights so that we could not, you know, reinvent the wheel or conflict with what they were seeing because they know their school's the best. So you have those insights as well in your backup pack to actually see what each of these building principals is just going to go off and do, or has already started going off and doing, and what their, their things are. It's consistent, but it's just different lenses on the problem, and everybody's sort of highlighted that we took that approach. It was one of the ways we got our arms around the data. Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Perfect. I think I should get credit for appointing this committee.
Actually, now that you did that.
It was me. Thank you. Thank you, yes. I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. You are, Maya, unless you want to stay the rest of the night, you certainly should sneak out now. You're good to go. And Lauren and Michelle, absolutely, and Megan, if you want to stick around, you may. But if not, thank you again so much. Wonderful job.
I'm just gonna, I want to make sure I hear the public comments, in case there's things we can follow up on.
Okay, so now we have Mr. Violante is here. Yes? We have our recognition. All right, so we have our Bergen County Boys Indoor Track Small School Team of the Year and Bergen County Relay Small School Champions. So we're sorry we held you up a little bit, but you're all set.
At the beginning of the 2022-23 winter track season, the boys' track team had high expectations, and their performances during the season did not disappoint. The team won the Bergen County Relays by three points by only entering six of the 12 relays. Pretty impressive. At the NJIC League meet, they came in second against a field of 32 teams, and then had a heartbreaking second-place finish in the Group One North Sectional Meet, losing by one point to Kinnon. The sprint medley team and 55 hurdler Tyler Caswell made it to the Nike Nationals. Tyler also broke the school record in the 55 hurdles and earned third-team All-County recognition. The boys' team received a wonderful honor when they were recognized by the Bergen County, as the Bergen County Small School Team of the Year at the All-County Dinner this past month. Coach Weinberg and Coach Gallo couldn't be prouder of the boys, and are excited because quite a few of them come back. Coach, you can present.
It's all me? Hello, hello? Yeah, so I've only been the head coach for three years. I've been coaching here for seven years, but this group of guys, one of the hardest-working group I've ever coached. They're great, funny, well-rounded, and they're, everyone here is a big reason why our team was the Small School Team of the Year. So I just wanted to talk about a few of them. So Tyler Caswell, as we talked about, he was.
Tyler, come here. Step up, so everybody can see you on camera, Tyler.
Tyler was third-team All-County. He broke the school record in the 55 hurdles and ran at Nationals in the 55. He was 26th overall in Emerging Elite Stars, and he is a major reason why our team was so successful. Also, Tyler is only a sophomore. He will be breaking his own school records for the next few years, and he's going to be breaking the outdoor records for the 400 intermediates and also the 110 hurdles.
Yes.
And then to name a few, so our sprint medley team that competed at Nationals includes Devin Wasserman in the 400.
Yay.
Who is also second-team All-League in the 400. We have Robbie Drees and Hayden Yuzon, who ran the 200. Hayden was .8. Hayden was .8 seconds away from breaking the school record in the 55 dash. And we also had Devon Smith, who was our 800 runner, and he was first team All-League in the 800. And to round out the group that is here today, we have Jeffrey Zhang, who ran the 55, 200 and 400. We have Jacob Bay, who ran the 800, the 1600 and the four-by-four. And we have Andrew Lee, who not only threw shots, but he was also a bowler and he was first team All-County in bowling. So he got honors in first team All-County for both bowling and for track. So yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for such a great season. It's going to be tough to see a lot of our seniors go, but Tyler and Devon will be hopefully here again next year.
Well, next season.
Next, next season, next year, what winter season? All right, thanks, everyone.
We're gonna take a picture up here. So you guys, do a good.
You guys just, I'll take that one. This is Tyler's. Give that to Tyler. Robbie, just take one, we'll figure it out later. Here, just take one and we'll deal with it later.
All right, come on up. Camera can't see.
All right, and we have our, our final presentation. As the board is aware and the community most likely is, is, is as well, the board receives training in, in multiple ways. Tonight, we're doing it publicly with a code of ethics training from John Comigno of Comigno Law Group. John is a very dynamic presenter. I've seen his presentations previously. He knows his stuff and we're very thankful and lucky to have you here tonight. It's amazing how our schedule's just worked out, right? The, I think I was talking to him and he was somewhere flying over Arizona at the time to, to try to schedule this. So after the, the presentation, which is behind me, I will get this to the board, all right, in backup, and then also I will post this as well online. And that would be the same for the community with the presentation for the school culture and climate. So John, without further ado, the, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Doctor, Madam President. Dynamics, the key word. On a Monday following a holiday weekend after two prior presentations, right? As your chief education officer mentioned, my name is John Comigno. I am an attorney in private practice. For 25 years, I have concentrated my practice in education law. Our firm represents about 80 districts across the state in Pennsylvania. Through the Institute, I work with districts and educators across the country. Like you, I have a passion for education. Nothing is more important. And it is extraordinary to sit here, and she's already gone, because she's probably off to her studies tonight, and watch one of your students drill down into data about how to improve your educational community. Kudos to you. Kudos to you. And a study in what and why you're here. Let me begin, my friends, and we will be friends. Let me begin by asking, where do we in this great Garden State? And I say to my three children, you will have success anywhere in life, because you're from New Jersey. Where does this great state rank in 50 with regard to public education? What do you think? I got one, I got two. Number one, number one, I hear Massachusetts referenced. We regularly are neck and neck with Massachusetts and that's not one of five, that's not one of 10, that's not one of 20, that's not one in the east. That's one across 50. In a nation which prides itself in education, in a nation which prides itself in higher education, in the industry, in the greatest of minds, we're the best. We are the best. Why are we the best? We're the best in part because of the students that we have. We're in large part the best because of the teachers we employ. Because of the administrators who are here to guide the ship and because of selfless public servants like you, who give your time night after night, day after day. You get paid nothing. They get paid nothing. You get no benefits. We even split nickels about whether you get a bag of chips at a board meeting. We could compare that with local government and county government and commission after commission after commission. We're number one, folks, and frankly, we have walked through the desert since March 15, 2020, when the world stopped. Change does not come easy to public institutions. Change does not come easy to public education. We had to, you had to reinvent public education overnight and you did. And I wasn't here, but I'm quite certain that no one was standing where I'm standing saying, thank you. Number one. The rails that govern, the role that you play are not crystal clear. We're going to climb inside that tonight. But I think that when we have a question about what those roles are, when we have a question about, can I say this? Can I post this? Can I share this? Can I ask this? Can I access this? And perhaps the best advice I can give you tonight is go home and delete your social. I know you won't do that. But I think there are two questions that I would encourage you to ask yourselves in the moment when we think about these rails. And the first is this, what's your job? What's your job? What's the job of a school board member? Because in many ways, it's so unfair. You're an elected official. And, and who do we elect to this selfless position? Folks motivated, folks with ideas, folks who are connected in their community, folks with a vision, folks with an agenda. And that's not pejorative. Folks who want to speak and want to be heard. And then you get seated and then some guy or gal steps up here and says, you can't say that, you can't do that, right? It's not fair. It's a mixed message. What's your job, please? Ma'am?
To give our students the best education we can with the money we have.
To give our students the best education we can with the money that we have. Thank you, thank you. What else? Thank you. I told you before, ma'am, you'd be answering these rhetorical questions. How many employees does this Board of Education have? Good for you. And good for you too. You have one. Perhaps the most important thing you do is hire your chief education officer, hire your superintendent. There's certain rules, there's certain things you can't do without his recommendation, right? Or her, here in our circumstance, Dr. Charleston's recommendation, right? Depending on the district. That superintendent has certain licensure to assist, because you're elected, but you're elected nonpartisan in certain ways. And that is because your job is here to ensure, amongst other things, that what is a state constitutional right to a thorough and efficient public education is being delivered. Your job. Your job has boundaries, your job has roles, it has limits. We're going to be stepping through these various ethical tenants tonight to listen to the administration, to discern the wish of your constituents, to hear concerns of your constituents, to investigate, to interview, to chase down, to march into that social studies room that you hear is teaching the funny stuff. Is that your job? No, it's not. It is to ensure that this district is well-administered, not to administer the district. It's so catchy. It's such a catchy thing to say. But the proof's in the pudding. To see that the district is well-administered, that's your single most important job, to let your administrators administer the district while, while keeping an eye on the books, while ensuring that the curricular standards are those that are set through our state learning standards, to discern the wishes of your community. What's the purpose of a school board meeting? This also is tricky and this also has changed. As I stand, I feel like I'm at the White House, right? In, in a bank of cameras here. It's changed, it's different, right? One of our districts during COVID, that little exercise we had, 600 online and then the Zoom license broke. So fortunately, we had members of the community that were FaceTiming and streaming, which is always appreciated. Also, that live feed, so we had another thousand tuning in, right? Never before. I can see, we've got thousands behind me. Those of you at home, they're out in the parking lot. It's different today. Fortunately, there aren't hundreds here. What's the purpose of a school board meeting? What is it? Is it to hold a meeting for the public? Is it to inform the public? Is it to advise the public? Is it to engage in a question and answer with the public? What is it? What would you say? What's the purpose of a meeting? Please.
To work.
To work?
In public, not for the public.
Well done. To work in public. I heard something else over here. Thought I heard this. I would suggest that the purpose of a school board meeting is to take action. To take action. There are presentations, like the fabulous presentation that you heard tonight, thoughtful presentation that you heard tonight. A school board meeting is not for the public. A school board meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public, because you're a public body. And your operations, by way of committee reports, by way of presentations, by way of recommendations, by way of action, has to happen because of the Open Public Meetings Act in public. But sometimes we lose sight of that. We engage in Q and A, because it feels, again, kind of odd. Remember, the community steps up here, there's nobody in front of you. What do you think? What do you think? What do you think? Public comment is required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Two things are required by the Open Public Meetings Act, the Pledge of Allegiance and public comment. That's it. And certain notice rules. That public comment is so that you are informed in taking action by what the public thinks. One of your colleagues, very thoughtfully before, said, I want to hear public comment to inform action, to inform follow-up, not to engage in Q and A. And again, sometimes that's unfair. The public thinks, well, you're not being transparent. My favorite word. It's not my favorite word. You're hiding the ball. You're not engaging with us. Superintendent's happy to engage. Assistant Superintendent, BA, happy to engage. This is not the forum for that engagement. Role the board members, see that the district is well-administered. Purpose of a school board meeting is to take action in public. I suggest to you, those are the two most important things that we're going to be talking about. As we climb through what the School Ethics Act says, some other key tenants, folks, you on the board are the governing body of the school district. The governing body, executive body, not an administering body. You're charged with high-level policymaking decisions. Only the entity can enter into contracts or other binding agreements. Decision-making authority is limited. Again, you can't administer the schools. Many situations, you can't act without the recommendation of your superintendent. Let me ask you this. This is one of these things that's extraordinarily unfair. I often see it with new board members. Can you ever take your hat off? You know, you're on the lacrosse field, you're on the baseball field, at the track meet, school musical, somebody comes up and says, you know, I heard about that climate study. What's the board think about it? Heard there were some issues about SEL. You know, SEL's really CRT in, in hiding. It's not, actually. They both have three letters. They're both an acronym. That's about it. CRT is not taught any New Jersey public school. Footnote that. Can you engage with a member of the public about a personnel matter, about an HIB matter? Somebody's burning to tell you about this personnel issue. Thank you for sharing your concern with me, there are certain ethical rules I have to follow. Have you spoken with the building principal? I encourage you to. Please do. Please let me know when you have, so I can follow up with the superintendent and the board president. I did. Have you followed up with the superintendent? No, I haven't. Please do. Let me know when you did, so I can follow up. That's it. That's it. When you start stepping beyond that, folks, you're getting off into the woods, it's a bad place to be. You don't want to expose yourself to potential ethics claim. When we talk about the ethical rails, what's on the other side when there's a potential violation is a complaint to the School Ethics Commission, which oversees and enforces these rules. I suggest to you, you're an elected official, yes. Can you speak your mind? Yes, 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 in italics. Certain times, we can say, I'm not speaking as a member of the board. Is that what is heard and what is remembered? Or is what is heard and remembered, what comes after that statement? Board member up in Sussex County in a district reached out to me, been quoted in national media. John, I was interviewed for 30 minutes and I made sure in the very first moments of my interview, I said, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. They didn't report that. This is my surprise face. Can you ever really take your hat off? It's not so much the words that come out of your mouth, but what is heard and what is understood and what is perceived by that member of the public who's engaging with you. Let's jump into some tenants, some sections of the School Ethics Act. ATNA 12, 24.1D. No micromanaging. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer, but to. but to gather with my fellow board members to see that the schools are well-run." Central tenant. So, some examples. And I shared, your superintendent will share with you the materials. Not going to go through all these cases. I'm going to touch on a couple of high points. They're wonderful examples, though, wonderful bad examples. C 6406. So this is a case from the School Ethics Commission. Board member violated the code when he visited a school and took pictures of windows in the middle school and items in the board office bathroom with which he then spoke to reporters. Conducting an investigation, speaking on behalf of. You got concerns about facility. What should you do? Remember, the community brings you concerns about facilities. What should you do? I suggest you share them with your superintendent and your board president. You let the administrative process continue. "John, 60 days went by. Nothing happened." What do you do? Then you follow up. Do you have to sleep on it? No, no, you don't. But you have to give an opportunity for an administrative process to take place. That's the point. Limited to policymaking. "I'll confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them." What a wonderful evening to be talking about this after hearing about this survey. The comment about stakeholders. Discerning what is happening within the community. But you can also look at how that survey was administered. It's not individual board member acting alone. Individual board member heading a committee set up by the Board of Education and administration with stakeholders reporting back to inform action. That's what this is talking about. "Board members conducted a site visit to assess a candidate for an assistant superintendent position without board authority." Violated the act. That could have derailed a career. Because what happened here is you've got an individual who's applying for an assistant superintendent position, and board members took it on their own to go visit that candidate's home district. Maybe that candidate's colleagues didn't know that he was interested in the position. Anyway, obvious failure. Morris Hills, this is one of our cases, and it's a great case. And it involves the high school spring musical. Ain't nothing more important than the high school spring musical. It will not surprise any of you to hear me say that. Spring musical is run, each year has been for many years, by a husband-wife team. The wife's the director, husband's assistant director. Teachers at the high school. Teachers at the high school acting, receiving a stipend, acting under the direction of the principal, who's acting under the direction of the superintendent, right? Got the chain of command. Assistant director retires, runs for the Board of Education as elected. Can he continue in that role? This gets to volunteering, and this is another thing that's unfair. Because who's giving to their community? You're giving to your community. Can you continue in the home and school? Can you continue in the PTA? Can you continue in the boosters? Can you? School Ethics Commission climbed inside that in this case, said, "When you're subjecting yourself regularly to the direction here of a teacher, who's the director." So you're on the Board of Education, who's evaluating, your superintendent, who's evaluating principal and supervisors who are valued, right? You can't be here, and you can't be here. That's what the School Ethics Commission said. "We've got to be mindful of the boundaries of volunteering. Our role is limited to policymaking. That's the point." What information may a school board member access? What do you think? Can you get it? Those personnel files? Evaluations? Reprimands? Investigative summaries? Lesson plans? All sorts of good stuff. You would all say, "No." But let's think back to those initial questions. If you have a non-tenured faculty member who is not being renewed, who's gone through the process and is before you in a Donaldson hearing, then maybe it's relevant to look at some of that information. If we're proceeding in a tenure charge, which is always lousy, capital punishment. I'm always mindful of it, the impact on one's career. But we've got a significant matter where we're going to be proceeding in discipline. Can you then look? Possibly. What action are you being asked to take? That's the point, and that's the question. I sit at Boards of Education at times, and I'll hear questions about purchase orders. Hundred-million-dollar districts. Where are we buying our pencils? What kind of paper can we access? What kind of information can we access? The point is, what do you reasonably need to inform the action that you're taking at the table? That's the boundary. Again, getting back to those initial questions. And there are a couple of cases here that talk about personnel committees, which are really disfavored, because all members of the board are entitled to hear recommendations, personnel recommendations, and further, you're hearing recommendations from your superintendent with regard to personnel matters. He's charged with ascertaining whether or not that recommendation that a building principal is making, a supervisor is making, is sound and explaining why or why not. What's a board of the whole compared to a board by committee, and how are they different?
So a committee of the whole, which is how we're functioning, will have just like a single meeting, and we're not breaking up into multiple committees prior to our monthly meeting, essentially.
Right, thank you. You are sitting here entirely, and you're engaging in committee work publicly, because you've got a quorum, and you're acting as a whole, as opposed to setting up individual committees that are going to work with administrators and hear recommendations and chase down issues and then come back and make recommendations. There are a number of differences, including the very practical of, are you in the room when the sausage gets made or not? You're making the sausage in public, essentially, by being a board of the whole and having discussions here publicly. And your policies reflect that. Are board members rubber-stamping personnel and other recommendations? Or put differently, may you vote no? Because I've been standing here for a half hour or so, saying, "You've got to follow this recommendation. You've got to let your administration administer," right? The answer is yes. You may vote no. You may vote no. "I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer." But the point is, you have to have a bona fide reason to vote no. There has to be a substantive reason not to follow that recommendation. That is not, "I don't like that guy." "I got concerns about what's going on in that building." "My son didn't make that team." Couple of quick cases. Central Regional, it's been in the news. One of ours. "Board members didn't violate the code when they voted not to reappoint an employee to a former position despite the contrary recommendation of the principal and superintendent, because the statute doesn't require the board to accept all." You simply, you simply can't dismiss unless you have a good faith reason to. That's the point. You don't have to explain your answer. But I would suggest to you, folks, be thinking about why. And be thinking about, and those of us cursed with lawyer brain, we're always thinking about what comes next. If there's a challenge, how do I explain this? What's the bona fide basis or reason? "I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties." This is thick. "I will support and protect school personnel." Stop right there. Who is that? How do we define that? What's that? Thank you. Everyone we pay. I love it. That's true. It's everybody. It's everybody. It's everybody. It's not just your one employee, it's everyone. "I will support and protect school personnel." Now it continues. "In proper performance of their duties." That doesn't mean that everybody gets a pass. That doesn't mean that everybody gets a great evaluation. That doesn't mean that everybody... It means, it means. And I loved that the survey got into this from the jump. "I feel safe working. I feel safe walking. I feel safe in my classroom. I feel supported." We know that students that don't feel safe don't learn. We know that students that are hungry don't learn. We know that students without technology, we've seen over the last couple of years, don't learn. Similarly, we've got to pay attention, and you heard about it. Got to pay attention to the well-being of our colleagues, particularly after we walk through the desert, particularly after we ask them to walk through the desert. "I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties." Practically, that means your neighbor comes to you and says, "This French teacher is unhinged." You can't roll in here and raise your hand and say, "Hey, I need to talk about this French teacher." We've got rice notice obligations. First off, there's a process if we are going to be talking about one. Further, that French teacher... And just so we're clear on the record, this is a hypothetical. Hypothetical, hypothetical. That French teacher is not your employee. You have an employee that can chase down that concern, and that concern needs to be shared privately and investigated privately. That's here. That's when the cameras are up. That's easy. What about when you're on the sideline at the baseball game? What about when you're at intermission in the awesome spring musical? What about when you're in the grocery store? Can you ever take your hat off? What about the social media post? "That teacher's unhinged." Can you check the thumbs-up box? Can you share it and say, "Look at this"? Is it different? Something to think about. What's seen, what's heard, what's perceived? Couple of cases. Board member violated the code when he sent a letter to the superintendent copying the president of the State Board of Ed, Executive County Super, accusing the superintendent of certain misconduct. That's a violation, because of what we lawyers would refer to as publication, right? We've got third parties that are sharing the concern. Look at this one. "President of the board violated the code by posting the following comments on his Facebook page, personal Facebook page, and a link to a picture of the superintendent. Quote, 'Now if we could only do something about our local terrorists that destroy dreams and burn futures.'" Don't do that. Does that mean you can't have concerns? Does that mean that you can't objectively evaluate? Does that mean that you can't share? Of course not. But it means that we've got to be mindful of public comment. We've got to be mindful, and I'm not talking about public comment from here to there. I'm talking about from there, out and otherwise. Is the role of the board president different than other members, other than the double salary? And I often joke that lawyer math, like there are reasons why we didn't get into medical school, right? Two times, nothing is twice nothing, right? But far beyond twice the work. My friends, yes, the role of the board president is different, and this committee gets, this policy gets into it. Presiding at meetings, establishing committees, consulting with the superintendent on the agenda, taking certain legal action. Also being spokesperson. Your board president's the only one who can speak on behalf of the board. And that's because you put her in that seat. You voted her into that position. What happens after a split vote? We've got a dispute about starting a new sports team. We've got a dispute about certain curriculum. We've got a dispute about a hiring. And the issue's approved. Can we come back the next month and try to vote it down? Or let's say it fails. Can we come back the next month and try and vote it up? There's actually a section of Robert's Rules, right? That gets into this, about how we address this. And when we've got a split vote, it can only be brought up again actually by one who's in the majority, whether it failed or was approved, even making the motion. Hyper-technically. But as you know, we often make decisions at the Board of Education, which are annual. And even if you've got an individual coming forward who was in the majority, whether it was a yes or a no, to make that motion, oftentimes, once it's settled, folks, it's settled. That's what this case says from Jersey City. Lone board member with process concerns about a superintendent contract. Persistent. Raised the issue, raised the issue, raised the issue. The majority of the board was not hearing. It, issue went away, except this individual actually filed a petition with the commissioner. Can't do that. Not only is that petition without legal merit, not only is that causing cost to the school district, but as you can see here, that individual subjected himself to an ethics challenge as well. "I'll recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board." We've got a sensitive matter in another district. Conversations in executive session, and one of the board members, following a meeting, filed open requests with another body about the issue being discussed. It's an eyebrow raiser. "Can't take personal action that may compromise." We're going to talk about confidentiality in a moment. Let's think about that individual action. And it's a nice segue to this from the role of the board president. And this isn't just individual action for individual reason, this is also partisan. This is, we're red, we're blue, we're left or right, we're progressive or conservative, we're this channel or that channel, whatever it might be. You know, so sadly today, we talk at one another, or yell at one another. We can have substantive differences of opinion here, right? This is murica, thank God. And we can have heartfelt, sincere conversations, but they're not expected to be partisan. And always, the pole star is the best interest of our students. "No personal promise, private action." "Board member was found in violation and suspended for six months when during a traffic stop she identified herself as a board member." Which, you know, I got to stop there. I mean, you can't get a free cup of coffee as being a board member. I don't know what the thought is here that you get a get-out-of-jail-free card. "Proceeded to insult the officer, called the request for her license..." "Proceeded to insult the officer, called the request for her license and registration a effing insult, threatened to make a call right now to the Council President, and after told that the ticket could not be voided stated, 'Then I'll call the Council President and your skinhead cop chief too.'" Don't do that either. SEC found that her near immediate self-identifying as a Board Member was an attempt to leverage the position. Violated the Act. What board information is confidential? I love the way you answered that question because I'm standing here asking the question, and I was gonna change my question and say, "What information is not confidential?" Because it's so much smarter to answer that question, and that's the question that you answered. Only information that is public is not confidential. Right? That rules out everything else. And when you think about what information you can access, it's information that you are asked, cast a vote on. We think about the role of the Board. We think about what happens at this meeting. We can think about how the dominoes line up, about what information we can access, what information is confidential, and then what information is not confidential. We used to talk about leaving packets on the kitchen table. Those days are probably gone here. Right? Everything's probably electronic. Gotta be careful about leaving the screen open. We also gotta be careful about not talking about the good stuff. You know what I mean? Because that's the stuff, oh, I just want to talk about it. And you just can't talk about it. All information is confidential except what's public, and that's what this tenant says. "I'll hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools." And that gets to discipline of employees. That gets to student matters. That gets to finances. That gets to contracts. That gets to legal issues. That gets to negotiations. We could go on and on and on. So much. Look at how it continues, though. "I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow Board Members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school." It's great language. It's actually beautiful language. And it gets at this role that you play as an elected official. It's not just your ideas. Your ideas are important. But it's discerning in your neighborhoods. It's discerning on the ball field. It's discerning what you're hearing to the administration and to your fellows what the community wants. We've touched on this a couple of times. I'd get at how we define investigate. Can you share the concern? Yes. It's your superintendent and your Board President. Can you walk into the principal's office of a building? Can you walk into a director's office? When it comes right down to it, folks, when we talk about the pyramid with your superintendent at the top, everyone else is your superintendent's employee and subordinate. Technically, you're not even permitted to speak to those individuals. But you can share the concern and let that investigation continue. Talked about volunteering. Also, before, we get at the degree of involvement that you have with regard to staff and students to look at those rails. I so appreciate the time to be here tonight. Again, I applaud you and your continued great work. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Please.
So I'm just wondering if you can elaborate. You said how we really can't talk to anyone. But as a parent, you have a child. You have concerns maybe with what's going on in the classroom with your child, and you want to meet with the teacher. Like, how do we handle that?
Yeah.
That's when we can try to take off the hat.
Yeah.
Right?
Great question. Practical question. Being a Board Member does not take away rights that you have as a parent. Being a Board Member in certain ways narrows your speech rights as an individual. May you go to a parent-teacher conference 100%? Always. I know you would never do this. You can't at that table say, "You know I'm a Board Member." Right? May you sit as a parent and ask questions as a parent? Yes. May you communicate with a teacher as any parent would? Yes. Can you go to that building principal? Yes. But it's about your child. And it's limited to your child. And I would also suggest as a courtesy, and your superintendent knows his students, so he knows your child or children. But if it's beyond the typical, you might want to give a heads up. "Hey, I'm meeting with so-and-so about this issue. Wanted to let you know." Simply as a courtesy. Thank you for your question. Other?
Anyone else?
I have a little turnaround on that question. How do you convince your child not to be accosted by someone who says to you in the school system, "I hear your mother's a Board Member", and proceeds to ask your child questions?
Tough scenario. Tough scenario. And I would encourage you to work with your colleague Board Members in how we work within a community to address that issue. And perhaps that issue... And I speak as a father as much as I do in an attorney. I would never put on my children to deal with an issue like that with their peers. But perhaps we talk with the superintendent about how top-down within that building, if an issue becomes chronic, becomes persistent, becomes almost feeling like something is antagonizing, we might address from a behavioral standpoint. Thank you. What else? Yes, another?
No, no, no.
I was going to ask you about social media and the Board engaging in that platform. So I previously was the...
As a Board?
Yeah, as a Board. So I previously was the Board President, and we had gone back and forth a few times about some Board Members wanting us to have a voice and kind of address issues that are arising on social media as they're happening. So what is your recommendation or, you know, way for us to proceed? If not at all?
Social media in so many ways is so unfair when we talk about the news cycle. We talk about squeaky wheel. We talk about an issue which can take on a life of its own and appear to be the most colossal, significant issue. May a Board of Education have a Facebook page? Have a Twitter presence? Yes. Statements by individual Board Members should not appear there in any different way than statements by individual Board Members happen here at this table. And if the Board of Education is gonna speak through that medium, it ought to be through your Board President or through a designated representative designated by your Board President with the knowledge and support of administration. And I would encourage you, folks, not to get sucked in to this immediate news cycle, which is artificial. So the rules are the same. It feels like they shouldn't be because, oh, come on. There's two more, there's 10 more, there's 15 more comments. Right? How many thousands of people live in this community? I would encourage you to think about that. And have a comprehensive approach when it comes to how you share information. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
That was great. That was mine, too. Yeah. So, yeah, thank you very much. That was incredibly informative and also I really appreciated the energy. I'm still jet-lagged right now, so it kept me awake. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So we are, as you could tell, unless individual Board Members have anything on any of the topics here, we should be able to jump down to the HIB resolution. And I wanted to inform the community after public comment that the Board will be going back into closed to discuss a HIB and also to discuss a legal matter. No action will be taken, but we'll be going back into closed. So Ms. Rundell, I'll turn it over to you.
Mike, did you... There is something under Fiscal Management. I was just gonna let Mr. Rundell connect.
Just real quick. Many of you are aware of the fact that we purchase our gas and electricity from a third party other than PSC and J. We've been doing it for many years and have saved a substantial amount of money. The Board should be aware at the next regular Board meeting, there'll be a trigger resolution authorizing me to proceed with a reverse auction. Once I get those results, we'll be looking to lock in either 12, 18, or 24 months.
Thank you very much. All right. So I need a motion to affirm our HIB resolutions from our March 27th meeting. Ms. Scarpelli, seconded by Mr. Hayward.
Ms. Caricella?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McThebola?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes. That brings us down to our other... Any liaison reports? Ms. McThebola?
I have a short one from March 28th when I went to the CPAC meeting. It was very interesting. It was a report from an attorney. They called it special education law. Because a lot of the people who are on CPAC lots of times, they know a little bit about their kid. They don't know general law requirements. And it just was very interesting. She went over some of the legal requirements of special education law. She went over the IDA. She went over what free and appropriate public education means. And made mention to the parents there that after the age of 16, when your child goes through an IEP, they also can attend the meeting as well. It's something that I know I knew about, but I don't think everybody does become familiar with that. And then we heard about what we heard here at the Board meeting about the possibility of summer programming coming up. It was a shortish meeting. It was good, though. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else? Do you think we have to talk about our other Board Goal? I think we get to knock them all out tonight. And that is, we met... So it was Ms. Dr. Robinson, Ms. Scarpelli, and Ms. McThebola, myself, and Dr. Charleston. And we talked to discuss our liaison roles. Real quick, actually, Ms. Scarpelli, will you maybe go through like the background of where, like since you... Just where we were? And then where... Why we went from committees to committee of the whole?
So when I was first on the Board, we functioned as committees. We had four Board Members would meet on various committees. So we had Fiscal Management, Personnel, Instruction and Programming, Policy. And at one point, the Board had decided that they wanted to change how we did our committees. Board Members just felt like information wasn't really being shared with each other the right way. So we switched to a committee of the whole structure where we would have our committee meetings together, all nine of us at the same time. And so we... What we did was, part of the idea was to have each Board Member as a liaison on that committee. And it really was meant as a way to alleviate the burden of the Board President. Because without committees, everything kind of falls on the Board President's shoulders, where it was another Board Member that was assessable or could bring up items for an agenda. And it was to share some of that responsibility with other Board Members. We were not supposed to meet with... As a committee or liaison. We did meet a few times when we had our prior Director of Curriculum with curriculum. And when Dr. Charleston first came on, we did have liaison meetings. But at some point, we said, "This is actually not really how we should be functioning." "We really should all be getting the information at the same time." And when we hired our Assistant Superintendent, who is now in charge of curriculum, it made sense. He's here at these meetings. We're not requiring another person to attend those meetings. So that's been the structure for the last five, five years about? Yeah. So, and that's where we were, so...
All right. So then, when I, last year, when I became President, I was tasked with giving everybody their liaison role. But the last two that I had been a liaison for, I never met for. Like, never. It seemed silly to me that we were having these roles with no responsibilities. So we talked about going back to committees or redefining the role of the liaisons. We put this ad hoc group together. And we went through three kind of options. We stay committee of the whole and we take those liaison roles away. And we're just a true committee of the whole. We do have those second-tier liaisons where it's the CPAC and it's our HSAs and Recreation Advisory Board and our Council. Those things. And those are valuable. And they... When people bring those things back, we learn from them. So I think that those are valuable and we should keep those. But the other core liaisons, as we call them, would no longer exist. The other is to go back to committees. And that can change our whole structure. That means maybe we only meet to take action and our committee meetings are then committee meetings. So we would only have one meeting a month. If... Or we could have a regular meeting, a... Another meeting, I don't know what that would be called, and your committee meetings. I think the Board President does like sit on them de facto, so that's a lot of meetings. Or we stick to what we have right now, which would be the committee of the whole, and we have these liaisons. But the way Dr. Charleston works, it's not how he works. So no one... It does seem a little silly to have those roles without any responsibility. So the recommendation of the ad hoc committee was to go with option one and be a true committee of the whole. In addition to that, really go through some training on what makes an effective committee of the whole and encourage a lot of discussion. So we are having this. I know we asked questions in... Of Dr. Charleston in private. And we have our own information that we researched. But if we can speak in public about it and discuss it as a whole, then I think the public will be able to see sort of where our heads are at and why we're making the decisions that we're making. So just want to open it up. If anybody has any thoughts, concerns, comments, this is the time. This is that discussion. Yeah. Mr. Corey?
So we talk about the idea of having a larger conversation instead of a lot of smaller conversations. I think what's important to realize is the volume of that discussion, it doesn't go away. At some point, it gets insolidated. We may be here longer. Well, we're starting earlier, so we'll be here longer. The more that we discuss out in open, and it's not just a... Well, I think the term on the presentation was, "Are we rubber-stamping recommendations?" Well, if we have the opportunity to discuss them, we have the forum to discuss them. Ergo, my comment right now. That it gives the public the opportunity to hear what we're saying. the opportunity to hear what we're saying. It gives our opportunity to have that discussion. A little, our committee of the whole meetings have been a bit efficient, I would say, because we, we put it all together, stack it, and then we work through it in a formal process so that it's seen and it's observed what we've approved. But having that open discussion, we've already, we have coffee, so we can have that. So, for that purpose, I see a lot of value in opening up those discussions versus having non-majority. And I think, let me clarify this. If you, if we have subcommittees with fewer than five board members, they don't necessarily need to be a public meeting. Those are discussions that could happen that come kind of to a head, but in a formal way and not necessarily transparent way. So, this could be a better way to, to put it all literally on the table.
Yes, and those consolidated meetings that you're talking about, I would think that those would be like our regular meetings where we're taking action. And these meetings that we're having right now would be our time to talk about all those things that we're about to take action on at our regular meeting. So, if we can have discussions at these Cal meetings, I think that would be good and kind of to what, to your point.
Yeah, I was just gonna say kind of the same thing. The transparency of the committee of the whole is just, it's more pure. And I think that's what we've heard a lot. I agree with the comment that transparency is sometimes this like a tack word or something. But where we can be transparent, I also, you know, I heard a lot about that at the training I went to as a new board member from the, the folks at the districts that did committees that seemed to be like, well, how do you get things done if you're not meeting in the committee because you have to meet in public? I'm like, well, you're supposed to be meeting in public. So, it was kind of, it was interesting to me because when they surveyed us, I think, at least the groups that I was with, a lot of them did do committees. But then when I talked to them further, it just seemed like their districts weren't as transparent. So, I, you know, I was very proud to work with you guys and this board and this community because I felt like we were giving the public what they wanted with transparency.
It does sound like committee of the whole is a bit of a unicorn right now. I don't see a lot of them either.
But I would appreciate the training to make it more robust. I think that was one of your comments about
I agree.
How to just encourage that conversation. Because I know a lot of us do do our homework, but when we come here, maybe sharing more.
Thank you. Ms. Edin?
It's more of a question for Sharon and Rona. Are you the only two that were on the board before the committee of the whole?
Yes. Oh, Liz would have also been.
Oh, no, Liz was on the board.
She was on the board.
I meant Rona. I'm sorry. What did I say? I'm sorry. Rona and Sharon.
Yeah, you did.
I did, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Liz was on the board.
Liz was. I think it might have been her last, but she was here.
Your perspective is important to me because you've been on, you've run, you've been on the board with different ways that it, that it has been run.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'd go by your past expertise and experience on it that if your recommendation is the committee of the whole, if you think that's the better way to go, then I certainly would support that. My only perspective is from this. I were, did attend board meetings. I remember when it switched over. But you really have to know from somebody who's been through it, the pros and cons of it. You see it in a very different way.
Let me just start by saying that when I first entered the board in the 80s, we had committees. We had committees. Eventually, and it had nothing to do, by the way, with whoever was superintendent at the time, the committees became much more concentrated as far, and the committees were appointed by the president, the vice president, they were all done the same way. It became important to the chairpeople of the committee to have a committee every month, every week, every, which technically wasn't necessary. The other thing is, it got away from the board people having committees. So, in other words, if I was chairman of the curriculum committee, it would be up to me to talk to the head of the curriculum and to say, look, we'd like to talk about any new books that you're going to be bringing up. We'd like to hear about whatever new things. But it would be my agenda. It got to be the agenda of the administrators telling the group that was called the committee what they were going to do. And kind of, in some cases, not Mike's case, but in some cases, making decisions for the rest of the board. Or forcing the committee, this would be in Mike's case, when we were doing referendums, somebody on the committee would say, oh, I have somebody who could do this. Can I bring them in? I mean, so it would become a completely separate organization. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the same committee that you would think about when you, when you started. There were a couple of things at that time that really kind of got to a couple of us and we said, we should do away with committees. And when we brought it up to the board as a whole, I guess, who was on, I'm trying to think, who were the people that were on the committee? We set up a small group.
Brian.
Brian was on, all right, Brian and, yeah.
Ted.
Ted and me, right. And we set up a committee that would look at a committee of the whole. We did research on whatever boards had committees of the whole, how they went about doing it. And we decided what we would consider a committee of the whole. We presented it to the board as a pilot committee to start with. Let's give it a try for a year, see if it works out. And everybody said, oh, I got all this free time. I get all the same information that I got before and I don't have to go out every night. And that included whoever was president at the time. So, it became, that's how it came to this way of doing it. I think what's happened is, in some ways, we were seeing we were going kind of another way. And you're right. We develop, we have different administrators in charge of different things. I know as, as a secondary to CPAC, I also talk to special ed to find out if anything's coming up that they need on the agenda, that they want me to know about. And I don't particularly give it to the board because she's, Dr. McKay is often here to give it to the board. But I like to be informed about it. And that's, if it was something the whole board knew, I would type it to the whole board. I would say, be aware that this is coming up on, on the agenda, and then we could all discuss it and so on. I don't think everybody was able to do that on their committees. So, that, yes, we need a regulation, so to speak, which we didn't have for a committee of the whole that would say, if you're appointed as a liaison, of course, you might be appointed to go to finance, especially around budget time, you know? Or you may be two people appointed to go to finance at that time because it's important. And so, you'd be allowed to see that written based on who's ever here next year and who's ever here the following year and the following year. So, we'd all be doing it kind of the same way. I know that's a little bit explanatory, but that's how I feel about the committees.
Yeah. And my perspective is, one thing is, it does free up a lot of time. I mean, it is, when we had committees, it really is very demanding on the superintendent, the business administrator, board secretary, and the president because they are at all the meetings. So, it is a lot that, that they have to do in addition to these meetings. But I do find that this meeting is, is sufficient. The biggest hurdle, I think, getting over that is just feeling comfortable speaking in public. Because what we would be discussing in public here, if we had committees, would be in a more relaxed, private, not public environment. So, you may feel more free to speak. But that's really the biggest hurdle is, is really sharing for the public what we're talking about in our committee of the whole so that they feel we're being as transparent and informative for the public at these meetings. Because after we, these meetings, then there's usually action items that we're voting on. So, if we don't have this, like a big, robust conversation about something that might be of interest to the public, and then we just vote on it, then they can say, well, the board didn't even talk about it. So, but I prefer to, well, I guess a shorter answer to your question is, I do, I do value the committee of the whole structure. I think it does work.
I wanted to add.
And then I think having your perspective is very helpful because, like I said, you were on both, have different ways.
And I wanted to...
So, this is what you feel then, obviously, you know?
To also say one other, one other thing, because I think Dan had said, we get a lot of information as a board member from our superintendent. And we can ask our superintendent those, the kinds of questions sort of that we would ask. I think it's important in some cases, even if you get the answer, sometimes you ask a question, sometimes it's on a regular meeting or maybe a committee of the whole meeting. And you ask the question and you get the answer. So, you feel very satisfied with the answer, but you don't bring it up as a, as a question to ask. I think if you brought up the question on a committee of the whole, instead of just asking the question of the superintendent and saying, saying to the superintendent, oh, that was a good answer. Thank you for telling me. I'd like to ask this at, on the committee of the whole. And that way, other people would, who happen to think of the same question, would also know the answer. So, I think that's also something we have to be aware of double saying, so to speak.
That's great. Yes, thank you. Dr. Robinson?
With regards to the training that you mentioned, I think one of the items that I know I have struggled with is how to, according to Robert's rules and things like that, express dissent. You know, like what, what is the proper way to disagree with something or to even say, you know what, can we table this? Or, you know, when is the time that you should abstain from a vote? Or, you know, how do you go about expressing, you know, non, like, non-conformist ideas?
Yeah.
And I think that that's even sometimes something that I've noticed over the years that I've been on the board, that we may have even struggled with at times. And so, I just ask that in our training, that we maybe delve into that a bit.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else? I guess we could do a straw poll real quick. If it looks like we have consensus, I'm probably gonna put this on the agenda for our regular meeting at the end of the month, which I think is the 24th. So, in favor of option one? All right. Appears we have consensus, so we'll move on from that. Dr. Charleston put on for, 424. All right. All right. I think that's it. All right. So, I guess at this point, I'll open up public comment. It is 9:04. State your name and your address. I'm gonna say we have three minutes. It'll be me, since no one else is really sitting up here with me anymore. All right.
Good evening. My name is Orly Goldfeld, 72 Delmar Avenue. I'm one of the heads of CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Thank you, Rona, for attending our meetings. You are all always welcome to our meetings. We have one quarterly meeting that's open to the public and includes administration. So, you're certainly welcome to join us and hear some of the concerns that our parent and guardian population has. I came to this, first of all, I enjoyed the ethics presentation. I felt like I was in a CLE course. And, you know, what I heard was the purpose of board meetings is to take actions. And you all need to be aware that the actions that you take affects the special ed population in this district, which is approximately 20% of the student body. So, there's a large group of special ed students, and you affect them. I was very pleased to see that the climate survey analysis included a subsection about the special ed population. I had asked Dr. Charleston and Dr. Robinson if we could have a CPAC representative on that committee. That was declined, but I'm glad that you looked into that data because I think it's important. It's not surprising to me at all that the findings included a concern by the special ed community about inclusion of our students. It's true, our students have a hard time socially, academically. They are different. They might have disabilities that are invisible. And so, taking steps to make them more included in the general population is really important. And so, I'm, I stand here today as a representative of CPAC to offer any support that we may to the board, the administration, the teachers, the public, anyone who wants our help. We stand ready to work with you to make our students' experience better, easier, more inclusive. I think that's it. I hope I've made it under my three minutes. I'd ask Ms. Finley if those Rutgers recommendations that she mentioned are going to be available to the public because I would be interested in seeing that. So, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Megan Finley, 47 Emerson Road, coming not about the climate survey, but about that conversation on the structure of the board. So, I'm gonna speak as a former board member who participated only during the time of committee of the whole, but experienced committee of the whole both pre and post the hiring of Dr. Charleston, right? And you mentioned that it did, it did shift because a different superintendent would interact differently with their board and have different ways that they want to operate. It sounded like the conclusion of this discussion was probably landing on keeping the committee of the whole and wanting the transparency in the discussion that that, that involves. And I think the potential for that to work well is definitely there. And the difference that I would note was more around at the inception of committee of the whole, those liaisons, they were coming and bringing topics on each, right? And saying, here's some things that came up that we should all talk about. And in the absence of that, if you're not gonna have the liaisons, what is the mechanism for the topics to come up at committee of the whole? It sounds like you're going there. Let's get a training. Let's find out what the best practices are. Let's find out how this is really supposed to work. If we're not gonna have liaisons, then what is going to spark the conversation? Is it two weeks ahead of a regular meeting? I know what all the agenda topics are gonna be that we're gonna vote on and every single one of them comes up for discussion? And that's a whole different planning operation on the part of the president and the board. Or is there something else? I'm not, is it questions from board members that are collected in advance so that you're ready to talk about them? I don't know what it is. I'm not trying to even incorporate some. Just that you gotta be really intentional and very specific about what the new mechanism is to make this work, to encourage that discussion and to make sure the public is seeing what you want them to see, which is truly robust discussion in the public, in front of the cameras, about everything that gets voted on later on. So, kudos to making that happen. And thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no more public comment. I'll close public comment at 9:09. All right. I just need a motion to adjourn. Ms. Caricella, seconded by?
Sorry. No, 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 not to adjourn.
Oh, right.
We're going into closed session to discuss a HIB. And then we're going in for a legal matter. No action will be taken. We're not coming back in the public.
Yeah. Ms. Caricella, Mr. Corey, all in favor? Meeting, whatever.
So, if the board members can stay here, and I could ask the audience to leave, including Keith and Dean, we're only gonna be for a couple minutes. And then you can come back in and break down. And then the board's gonna move to the library for the second part of the closed, okay? So, we'll be out of here in less than five minutes. And then, John?
Rob, will you take John's?